Good evening. I'd like to call our August thirteenth meeting to order. If you guys will please rise and join us for a prayer and the pledge.
Pray with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather today and we pray for two of our councilmen who are over the weather. We pray for their quick healing and get back to work. We are reminded that the Bible in Romans tells us that the authorities are God's servants. And this is why we pay taxes. And for these people to volunteer their time for no compensation is admirable. And we should show our appreciation to them and thank them. Everything that happens in Aurora for all seventy-five hundred plus of our citizens happens because these folks manage that. And allow us to go out and do our jobs. And we thank them for giving us that opportunity to serve our citizens. We of course appreciate the rain we got today. We very much needed it. It turned out to be a beautiful day. And we hope to see a beautiful week. And in your heavenly name, we thank you. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America. The children of the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Thank you, Wes. I may have to have you help me with my resume after that. First up, public comment. No one signed up, so we'll move into accounts form. Mr. Proton?
Last week on Thursday, we had the second hydrant party of the year. We did not get the heat that we did the first time. It's weird to say that a seventy-five degree day in the summer felt a little chilly, but with the mist of the water in the air, it was pretty chilly. But there was a lot of troopers out there staying in the water the whole time. Had a good, pretty good turnout. Had the field full again. And thank you to the city staff that came and helped cook dogs and burgers for everybody. The following night, we had the slime party, which we didn't exactly know how well that would be attended. And it turned out great. There was, well, there's gonna be pictures posted here pretty soon, but there was hundreds of kids running around. And they ran them out of slime in probably the first hour, and then they turned to water and everything else they could find to shoot at each other. Chief Hurd was the brave soul that showed up in a white shirt. And he was a target for a little bit. But thank you to fire and to the park staff that helped us get that set up. And other than that, I attended or had the pleasure of attending a few fire department trainings in otherwise quiet couple of weeks.
So I was at a, back to, or excuse me, Bright Futures meeting last week. And then last Tuesday, we had the back to school bash. So had double the number of students compared to last year. So a great success with there. And then thank you to everybody who came out and helped with that, so.
We have Ms. Pettit on the, via Zoom. I don't know if, did you want to give any update, Teresa?
The only update I have is I attended the Southland's board of solid waste management today. And approved some grants, closed some grants, discussed the tire pickup that was on South thirty-nine. Over sixty-three demise tires were taken out from that facility. So anyway, I really don't have anything else significant to report. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. I attended a meeting with Carrie and the school, a few members of the school board and some vendors, fence vendors, to talk through some fencing options for our trail that went really well. So hopefully, we continue positive movement on that topic. Outside of that, I did have one question, John. It's been, you know, maybe five, six months since we've kind of done a real good update for the rec center, financials, change orders, like maybe into February. Would soon be, would that make sense to do, do one?
We can see by getting that scheduled, yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Outside of that, I don't have anything else. So we'll move on to the consent agenda, which will be the regular session minutes from July twenty-third, the work session minutes from the twenty-third, along with the August twenty-two appropriations.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda for regular session from July twenty-third, work session July twenty-third, and August twenty-two appropriations.
Second.
Motion a second. Please vote. Thank you. Moving on to old business, seven dot one, second reading ordinance twenty-two dash thirty-three twenty-seven, amending section two thirty-five dot zero six zero Aurora Hospital Board Officers. Any questions?
No further questions from me.
Do you have something? Okay.
Make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number twenty-two four dash thirty-three twenty-seven, amending section two thirty-five dot oh six oh Aurora Hospital Board Officers.
Second.
Motion a second. Please vote. Thank you. Seven dot two, discussion, recreation center monument sign.
Counsel, in the discussion last time, there was some question. There was one vendor that, and it happened to be the vendor that we used to move, do the sign out at sixty and sixty. And that there were some questions about that. So warranty wise, five-year warranty on parts, two years on labor. And that it is a nine K pixel, just the same amount of pixels as everything else that is on there. So that was the question. One item of concern is that Carrie brought this to me as the planning and zoning person would, is that, and I didn't realize this, but the larger stand sign that was quite a bit larger, that is not in compliance, would not be in compliance with our own city codes to be placed there. So from that standpoint, that is, that's probably not something that we would not want to do, or that we would want to do. It's not follow our own codes as regards to a sign and stuff, so.
Go ahead. So I, so I like the height of it, but I can agree with the code side of it. I wouldn't want to get in against our own code. So really, to me, I think after looking through all of them, especially you answered the question on the warranty that wasn't specified. You know, I'm looking at this difference between the one that looks the same. And I just don't love the, even though I like the price difference of the redesign from sign design, I don't love the wider, squatter version of it. It just looks like, it looks like what would happen if you said, hey, I gotta trim this and make it fit kind of thing. And it might tie into Jason's comment in forum, but we had contingency in this overall project. Do we know the health of that? And that may be something you'd have to ask Steve or?
We still have a lot of, a pretty good amount of contingency left. We've been using it sparingly here and there when it's came up, when it has been justified.
Because I guess what I'm driving back to is we're getting to that point where we are going to hit an expensive part of the bill. But we've kind of hit, we've kind of got past that steel part that was the real concern initially. And I feel like if contingency is healthy, I don't know that the price difference is so critical that I'm not, I think now I'm moving back towards that original quote. And just kind of, I'm getting okay with it, I guess is what I would say, the original design.
From sign design?
Correct.
Yep.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the squat design. Of course, I know that I've got a great eye for any kind of architectural, but I mean, I, I like the one with the sign design with the redesign on there. That's kind of the one I would like to move forward with.
I could live with either. I'm just happy we got some options and a choice and to know what the difference was. There's still half of me that wonders what the return investment is on a video board. How many, how many extra items do we have to get to justify that? But I, I could live with either sign as well. I'm not, I think they both look good. So I think the original, although I don't like that it doesn't meet our code, I do like it as well. But I do think the smaller sign would be probably a better fit for the neighbors, not having something bright high up.
Carrie, does the first design from sign design, would that meet our code?
I haven't reviewed it in terms of the specs. I'd have to look at it.
Okay. That was the one that?
What is the height?
I can't remember.
You're talking about this one as the one that would meet?
That's the one that does not, would not fit.
The height of the one?
That one is?
The first one from sign design?
Sixteen foot high. And, sorry.
Hundred and thirty-six inches on there.
Eleven?
Yeah.
About eleven feet?
A little over, yep.
Eleven something?
Just under twelve.
The one thing that is, that I like about that is, is that the, the animation part of it is lower, not at the top like the other one up there at sixteen foot. It's lower.
I have no objections to, strong objections to that one.
I apologize, counsel. I was reading my code. Can you tell me again what the heights are on?
Just under twelve foot.
Okay, you're good.
Okay. Sounds like as close as a consensus as you're gonna get.
I think so.
And your most recent updated owner contingency has about a hundred and seventy thousand left in it.
Out of four hundred, something?
Yeah.
I can't remember exactly where we started, but yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm, I'm by it either way.
Yeah, Teresa, have any?
Well, with that being the case, I will, we will put together a resolution and get that back before you at the next council meeting.
Yeah.
So, so what I'm hearing is you kind of said this close to a consensus is, I'm gonna get, did Councilman Pettit have any thoughts?
I'm gonna go with no.
Okay.
I think bringing it back in a resolution is fair, and we can all have our say and vote at that time if there's.
Okay.
So, so be it.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. New business, eight dot one, resolution number twenty-two four dash nineteen eighty-seven, SRF wastewater treatment plant improvement bid.
Counsel, I am pleased to bring this before you. This is something that we've been working on. This group, myself, we've been working on this for, since two thousand nineteen. Two thousand twenty was kind of a lost year. But we've been working on this. And this is only part of the group, is that, because there's also on the state side, the DNR office is working with them through this process for the last nine years. This was one of the earliest questions that I had is, did we want to repeat getting us put back on, onto the, because if we drop off, then we're off. And it would be a couple of years before we could ever get back on. And so I just chose not even knowing. I said, no, let's go ahead and put us on. And then we had had meetings with Eric and staff later. But the importance of this was not lost on me going through this process before. And so we were able to keep it on to the SRF funding schedule. And now we're at a point where we're starting to, ready to move forward with it. At this point, everything is kind of in place moving forward as far as, as soon as we can move forward with getting the approval of the bid. And then we've been working through all the process to get with our financing and through the use, to be able to use the SRF program, the state revolving fund program, and to be able to get the two million dollar grant that we have available to us through this and stuff. So we have a little bit of a tight timeframe, is that we have to have everything allocated and everything signed by September thirtieth. So we do have a little bit of a tight timeframe to get moving on this and stuff. So once we're approving, we're looking at, remind me, Bob, somewhere in about January?
Yeah, I think January.
To get, get started with, with this. So overall, this project, well, Lance has been, some of the things that Lance has been working with just lately has just been having some of the sand filter. And you may not know what that is, but the sand filter has been kind of giving them some problems. This is, that is a key piece of equipment that is going to be replaced with this. And he and his staff have been doing a great job. Instead of replacing pieces of equipment, they've been doing repairs as best they can. Instead of buying a piece of equipment to replace this piece of equipment that in six, eight months will be completely, you know, not even used anymore. They're making do right now and kind of limping us along and stuff. And we're closing, you know, keeping our fingers crossed that everything will continue to work fine so that we don't have to put very much money into, into the existing equipment that's out there right now. So I do have the engineers here, if you have any questions, and Bob or Eric will go over the bid with you.
I don't have any questions.
So, good evening, counsel. So in, in general, we have one bidder on this project. And we solicited, I think, at least eleven along with advertising for multiple bids. But I think there were various factors that came into play as to why we're only able to get one. In the past, we, here recently, we've seen somewhat of a decrease, maybe, in the number of contractors that really can do this type of plant work. So that hasn't helped. But just speaking with the contractors during the bidding process, it seemed as though finding personnel, bonding capacity were just some of the issues that came up with some of the people that we would have expected to bid it. So while it was a surprise at the time, thinking we might only get one bid, when the time came, we were, that's kind of what we'd come to expect. Fortunately, the bidder that submitted a bid was someone that we've worked with in the past and is a really good contractor. And I don't know that I have, we have necessarily too many indications that the price was drastically inflated because of that alone. I think probably the major factors of why the price came in greater, so the bid being essentially five point eight, nearly five point nine million for construction, as opposed to prior to that, the, the original construction estimate as of twenty twenty-four years ago was nearly three. So things have gone up quite a bit since then. But fortunately, about where the numbers work out is with that additional two million in grant funds. That puts us back probably about, or loan wise, we're same as what we would estimate if we wouldn't have the grant funds in that ballpark. So that's a benefit to kind of, we're not too far off base of where we kind of thought we might be coming into this without having had any grant funds. But it's all the, all the work involved, like John indicated, is critical, the filters being a main part, and really those being a bulk of what the cost is. But like John said, we're kind of at that point to where we're ready to move forward with approval of the bid and proceed with processing contracts and documents with the contractor and get those submitted to DNR so we can close this within the ninety-day timeframe of when the bids were submitted. We did look into some, things moved a little slower because we talked to the contractor initially about, do you see anything in the design or anything you could do differently? That could be some, either value engineering or even just questions he'd had, somewhere we can save some costs. And, you know, there, he didn't really have a whole lot to offer. I feel like he did look into some things, but there was nothing substantial. So that's, we, I wouldn't say drug our feet, but we waited just a little bit longer to try to have those conversations, make sure there was nothing low hanging fruit or anything glaring that we could do to cut some costs. And so, yeah, that's kind of why we're at where we're at, considering the timeframe. Besides that, in general, that's kind of a summary of costs and things like that. Were there any questions that come up relating to that? Then you can run past me while you?
You don't have any questions?
So is the nine-thirty deadline something for, to get our grant? Is that, what's that?
That is, that would be the ninety days for the, from when it was submitted, for the contractor to hold their bid. So in the contract documents, they have, their bid's good for ninety days. So we just have to get documents executed and the loan signed off or closed so that that's not a concern.
Gotcha.
Part of that also, it was a little bit of a delay, is we have to send it in, the bid into DNR. They have to look over them and then questions back and forth. And one of the questions that I asked is that I wanted to talk to them to ask if they had any concerns about the higher, that it came in higher. And also ask, was there any other funding available for us to be able to assist with that? So we didn't. And unfortunately, there isn't.
And do they have any concerns? What was their feedback?
Their feedback was is that they were, they were seeing this across the board, not with just ours, but a lot of other different projects, whether it's on wastewater or the water side. They were seeing higher than expected bids come in because there's a lot of projects going on right now. And a lot of ARPA dollars being used for those projects.
And in that same line of thought, I almost probably expected if this project was, say, further into next year, that that could be even worse when all the ARPA projects actually come out to bid. So hopefully, or maybe a little more opportune time, it would be six, eight months from now, somewhere around there. Because there's gonna be a lot of projects that contractors are probably gonna be short, handling materials and things like that.
Gotcha. Okay, well, no other questions? I will make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-two four dash nineteen eighty-seven.
Second.
Motion a second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Eight dot two, resolution number twenty-two four dash nineteen eighty-eight, insurance renewal for health and dental.
Counsel, just one or two follow-ups, is that we've already been working with Heather to get scheduled, to get everything. As soon as we get this done tonight, we'll be able to move forward and start open enrollment as soon as tomorrow, is that we've got that all scheduled. One thing, Mayor Lewis, you had asked about the HSA numbers, is that Kami has went in and she is able to take a look at HSA numbers. Basically, how much has been contributed versus how much has went out. And I'll have those, we'll have those numbers for you, to give, provide to you when we have the budget session and to discuss that. I think that the, the numbers that she has, when we provide that to the council, will give a pretty clear view of that.
Great. And you're gonna scrub those of any kind of identifiable?
Yeah, none of that is available at all. Yeah, it's just, really just big overall thirty thousand foot type of view, and that's it.
Don't want it, just making sure it was coming that way, so.
And we didn't have any deviations from the percentages of the rates that she was able to get with the, okay.
I will say this, is that we were looking at one thing as far as moving, changing the, our life insurance. Not the amounts or anything else like that, but changing to a vendor due to circum, personnel circumstances. We decided not to make that move at this particular year because that might affect one of our employees. We decided to leave that alone. We'll take that in the end, into consideration next year, though. If you want more information on that, Kami can give you a little more information on that.
Good enough for me. Okay.
Make a motion we approve, oh, sorry, do you have any, I didn't mean to jump the gun there. Make a motion to approve resolution, resolution number twenty-two four dash nineteen eighty-eight, insurance renewal for health and dental.
Second.
Motion a second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Eight dot three, resolution number twenty-two four dash nineteen eighty-nine, Verizon tolling agreements. Is this the annual?
Yep, that's just to get all of the information from Verizon so we can ensure that they are remitting the appropriate amount of sales tax to the city of Aurora.
Any questions? I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-two four dash nineteen eighty-nine, Verizon tolling agreements.
Second.
Motion a second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Eight dot four, resolution number twenty-two four dash nineteen ninety, SFY twenty-two four grant. Evening, chief.
Good evening. The grant that's in the agenda for tonight is an ARPA grant, and that is for fire department radios. Specifically, it's for seven portable radios, one mobile radio, and two repeater units. This is a fifty-fifty grant with the state of Missouri. So we pay fifty and fifty percent, and then they pay fifty percent.
I was gonna say, so if I'm remembering back on the tornado was going through, we were having a problem with our radios connecting. Would this take, eliminate that problem?
This will, with the mobile repeaters, this will greatly help our being able to transmit with other fire departments. And it also has the state channels in there, Moeswin.
I was just gonna ask, is there, how did we come up with those, those amounts of radios? Is that a grant limit, or is that plenty? I guess I'm just kind of curious how you came up with the, those?
Well, the seven is for the, the seven radios. These radios are very expensive. You know, the radios we have now cost like, I don't know, seven, eight hundred dollars a piece. And the, these new radios will cost, you know, five, six thousand because they're, they're dual-band compatible radios. So they're not only gonna have our channel in there, which is one band, but also has the state channels, the Moeswin, which is another band. So they're dual-band radios. And also the repeater units, the grant, the requirements for the grant allows us to buy a repeater, but not a stationary repeater. So the two repeaters have to be mounted in vehicles. So one's gonna be mounted in our command vehicle, and the one will be mounted in the new truck when it comes. And so basically, what this, how this helps us is when, so right now, when we're talking, so I cannot talk to people, my firemen on the fire ground. We cannot talk like we're in Walmart because we don't have the capability, the radios don't have the power to transmit because we're going from radio to radio. So with this repeater unit, which we will have in the vehicle, is our, our portables bounce off of that repeater unit. And will also bounce to the nine-one-one center. So we'll be able to have a greater reach and more power with the repeater units. And this will greatly help us a lot.
Awesome. Any other questions? I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty-two four dash nineteen ninety, SFY twenty-two four grant.
Second.
Motion a second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you, chief. Thank you. Eight dot five, resolution number twenty-two four dash nineteen ninety-one, special use permit, Ozark Fiber.
Good evening, counsel.
Evening.
This request comes by recommendation for approval by your planning and zoning commission from their regularly scheduled meeting held on August sixth. The application comes by formal application from Ozark Fiber. So as you all know, at this point, Ozark Fiber is a new fiber internet provider that is installing infrastructure within our city limits. And what they are seeking is a property centralized within the city limits that would allow them to utilize it as both a lay down yard and a central hub for their services going out throughout the community. And so what they have done is they've searched for something in the center, like I said, a centralized portion of the city, and that's been a little bit of a challenge for them. So this property at one twenty-nine East St. Louis Street is what they found that would be feasible for them, for their proposed use. The property is currently zoned R-two, and it has neighboring property that's zoned C-one and also other residential use property around it. Initially, the conversation that came to me was a possible rezone, and I indicated to them that I had some pause and some concern about that just based on if their use ever ended, we would have a C-two zoning in that area, and that concerns me. So with that being the case, we discussed a special use permit that suited their needs, and they were willing to move forward with that. So based on our city code section four hundred dot four twenty, they've supplied all of the required information by code to make that request. We held the public hearing on August sixth, as I said, at the planning and zoning commission meeting. We did send out public hearing notices to all property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet. We had two people that were related to one neighboring property that did attend that public hearing. They had some initial concerns about aesthetics, what it would look like, and just general questions about what was being proposed there. Once they were, everything was explained to them, they had no opposition. So this comes to you from planning and zoning with no community opposition. Recommendation from staff is approval, and they have met any kind of buffering requirements and are willing to meet any additional. And they have, uh, met any kind of buffering requirements and are willing to meet any additional that we might require of them, just to make sure that we try to buffer between them and the residential area. Uh, Mr. Jason Ross is the president of Ozark Fiber. He is present here tonight. He's driven down a second time from Saint Louis to be here for this request. Um, so I'll yield to him unless you have any questions for staff.
No questions.
Good evening, council. Uh, I guess at the first part here, I should probably thank Ms. Hollis for all of her hard work on this. Uh, your, your team has been really, her and her team have been really great to deal with, very, very helpful to us. E- even on the construction side of this, as she mentioned, we are actively constructing right now. Uh, you've probably seen our construction crews. Um, it's an all underground construction, but I think we're progressing pretty well. Um, if we can get this special use permit approved here this evening, I'm pretty confident we'll have our, our first customer in town up and running by year end. So, um, so it's pretty critical for us to get this approved. I think she summarized it well. I mean, we've been looking for a lot here for probably about eighteen months. Um, commercial real estate is kinda difficult to find in, you know, in small-town America. Um, and, uh, it, we were pretty fortunate to find this particular lot. It, it's under contract, it's contingent upon, upon us getting this approval, so, um, as she mentioned, there were a lot of questions at the last meeting about the generator. Um, I, I've since gone back, talked to my team. The generator is very quiet. It's actually rated for sub seventy decibels, it's like sixty-five dB, so very quiet. Um, don't anticipate there being any issue with that. Um, a- as we had kinda mentioned earlier, the, the generator is just, uh, there in case commercial power goes out, and we will kinda cycle it to test it, so, um, but happy to, to, um, you know, we'll, obviously, we'll have to pull a building permit to get this, uh, lot, you know, this pad constructed. Happy to really deal with any concerns that we have from community members as they arise, so. Don't know if you have any questions about what we're doing, but happy to entertain.
I, I don't have any questions.
No, I appreciate the investment in our community and thank you for coming down and yeah, and being available and open.
Always appreciate it, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash nineteen ninety-one, special use permit for Ozark Fiber.
Second.
A motion a second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Next up, eight dot six, first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three twenty-eight, financial disclosure, establishing a procedure to disclose conflict of interest.
Council, the financial disclosure, uh, ordinance is something that is passed every year, and it's just housekeeping, uh, that we were required to do that through the, um, uh, State Ethics Commission.
Any questions? I'll make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three twenty-eight.
Second.
Motion a second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to eight dot seven, specialty event application, Community Christmas.
Council, this application comes by formal application from, uh, the Aurora Downtown Project. And I'll just tell you real quick, they intended to be here this evening, and I typoed the date, and so they're not here, and that's my fault. Um, but as the liaison to their board, I'm gonna present this to you tonight on their behalf. Um, the Community Christmas event is, uh, the proposed date is November thirtieth, so this would be the Saturday after Thanksgiving, as they've kind of adapt, adopted in the past. Um, and that's just their plan again, really no changes from last year. They intended to, to, uh, have the same kind of event they've had in the past with, uh, carriage rides vendors, Santa photos, the live entertainment, um, and all those things that they've had in the past. Um, they have not completely ironed out street closures and police presence yet. Um, they are looking to secure their date and then start their final planning where they would include the city staff in that conversation. So, um, we do anticipate the same kind of, uh, assistance that we provided in the past, but, uh, this was discussed at the management meeting this morning with no concerns from staff, so recommendation is approval.
And you're in their planning meetings as they happen, correct?
I am, yeah.
Okay, uh, any other questions? I'll make a motion that we approve the special event application, Community Christmas.
Second.
Motion a second, please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Eight dot eight, special event application, Aurora Christmas Parade.
Council, I am going to take a seat unless you have questions for me and let Shannon present the next two to you.
Hi, Shannon Walker, Aurora Chamber of Commerce, and as you have in front of you, it's time to prepare for Christmas parade. So December the fourteenth, two P M, traditional route that we've had for quite a few years, starting, we're actually looking at starting it maybe in White Park at the baseball fields a little bit more, because the Christmas parade is growing. It's huge now, and we're very thankful, and we just wanna make things easier for the participants. Um, we've never been one that, like, hands out numbers, 'cause it's logistically, it's crazy. Um, but we're gonna do better this year with walking groups that you meet on this corner. And if you have more than twelve vehicles with you, we want you to, to meet like at White Park, down in the parking area, and then we can bring you up past the, um, uh, tennis courts and the swimming pool, just to make the transition a little bit easier, so. But nothing's changed on our part for as far as that goes, so.
No concerns from staff?
No, discussed at the management meeting this morning, no concerns.
Great, any other questions?
Nope.
I'll make a motion, we approve special event application, Aurora Christmas Parade.
Second.
Motion a second, please vote.
Motion passed, who was it?
Take your pick. Uh, eight dot nine, special event application, fortieth annual Aurora Auto Fest.
Fortieth anniversary this year, October the fifth, um, at Oak Park. The only thing that we would like to do a little bit different this year is to increase instead of stopping at, what is that park? No, is it park? Oak, oak. On the east side of the park, park. It's oak. Anyway, on the east side of Oak Park, we'd actually like to close it off. Um, normally, we had been at the corner, we'd like to go past the corner, and then kinda bend it around to where about, I don't know what the address is, but it's where the, the, the smaller kids', um, jungle gyms are and things that are on that east side, just because we ran out of room last year, and I've already typed in a hundred and twenty addresses today, and I'm about halfway through what we had last year. So, um, last year, we had a hundred and thirty-six participants, and this year, I kind of expect it to be a little bit more. So that way, we don't have to halfway through try to move those barriers and get people where they're not parking there. So it, part of the park on that east side will still be open, but we just wanna increase it a little bit more. So that's about the only change we'd like to see there.
Any concern from staff?
Done at the management meeting this morning, um, and I'll make sure that Travis's and the street are both aware of the change on the street.
And I, I'll get, I'll get with him and get a map and show him exactly where I want the barricade and stuff, just to increase, just some parking for the participants.
Any other questions? Make a motion that we approve special event application, fortieth annual Aurora Auto Fest.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote.
Thank you very much.
Next up, staff reports.
Uh, council, um, K T, K T T S has named the Aurora Marionville Police Department, uh, the August First Responders of the Month. Uh, and they've given out some gift cards to, uh, Wes to feed his staff, um, through the month, uh, on some different things. So we're very appreciative of that recognition. Um, fire staff, uh, fire has two staff that are going to fire officer, uh, training, uh, one next week. Uh, paving, we're pretty excited about this. Paving gets scheduled, is scheduled to begin tomorrow. And so, uh, si- street staff will be working on that, uh, for the rest of the week. So barring anything, um, big coming up, they're s- scheduled for tomorrow. Uh, cemetery is ready for paving, and so they'll be, also be working out there, and then also out at the airport, uh, to do some more, a little bit of work out there. Um, the pool is closed except for some, uh, final pool parties and, uh, the benches, um, that are installed at Oak Park. Um, have any of you received pictures on that, uh, yet? All right, now, uh, I think I have that, and I'll, uh, get that done, so. Um, appreciate Trav and, and his staff, uh, putting the pedal to the metal and getting that done. Um, so scheduling of a site visit for the park board or the council in coming weeks. Um, put that last time. I know that, uh, we are meeting to discuss the, um, uh, uh, equipment next week. And so I was gonna get with Stephen Tellsher and ask if maybe after that meeting that we could go out there and have a, uh, just kind of a walk around and stuff, if that time works and stuff. So see if we can get that worked out for next, uh, next week on the twenty-first. So we'll find out and let you know as quickly as possible. Um, Anthony has been working on several things, and you've seen some of this before, new items that he is working on. He's, uh, reached out and been having conversations with Silver Sneakers to have them online, uh, what we need to do to have them online when we are open. Um, he has also began having discussions with the, uh, state and to, in order to, that we can get our state childcare licensing, uh, that is required, uh, for different programming, for after-school programs, summer, uh, camp type of stuff. Uh, Friday, uh, since the schools are closed, we're looking at Friday, uh, uh, camp openings, um, day camp openings, uh, things like that. So he's been working on those things. He's also working on a facility handbook. Um, he is taking some, uh, some of the, uh, handbooks, uh, that are available at other facilities and kind of just basically, uh, using some of theirs as ideas to get us started. Incorporating like, uh, the, uh, uh, the advertising policy that we've already passed, uh, incorporating that into and, and some different other stuff. He's working on drafting forms, uh, to be able to upload those into Day Smart. Um, and as we've talked, uh, the advertising for the recreation programs coordinator, uh, is, has been done, so. Um, Councilman Pettit, it did strike me is that with everything going on today, I forgot to return your phone call. And so if you're available after this, I'll give you a quick phone call to update you on, on some questions that you had, if you're available.
Yeah, I, I'm available, so just give me a call.
Okay, will do. Um, meeting with SAP, uh, to discuss equipment packages for gym equipment, uh, next week on eight twenty-one. Largely what that consists of is that we've had some preliminary, uh, discussions about, uh, just taking a look at, uh, the spaces, uh, the floor space, the available floor space, where planned equipment can be, the type of equipment that can be on there as far as the weights and the weight of the equipment, uh, and different things like that. And just some, really just big overview, making sure that we can maximize the, uh, the amount of space that, for the different pieces of equipment that we wanna use in all the different, uh, the b- the rooms. And this is specifically with the, uh, physical fitness equipment, the exercise equipment. Uh, treadmills, ellipticals, recumbent bikes, things like that, as well as some of the weight machines. So, um, we've kinda get, got that a little bit hammered out, um, but we're gonna be, be meeting again on the twenty-first with Councilman, uh, Kennedy and Councilwoman Pettit to finalize those. Nothing has went out to bid or anything else like that on that, so. Um, along with that is that I've had the, the discussions with, uh, um, the Rural Development Office of making sure when I need to get the, our, uh, equipment list into them, uh, for, uh, equipment on the community, on the community center side as far as the equipment for the conference rooms and stuff like that. So those are available, that money is available to us. Um, the upward, upwards to, uh, fifty thousand dollars is available to us through that. So, um, I plan on, uh, applying for all of that, because the equipment, uh, uh, that we're planning on getting exceeds that over there. Um, annual sludge removal is done and land application is completed. Lance, uh, uh, informed us that four hundred and sixty-four thousand gallons of sludge, uh, was removed from the plant and, uh, uh, applied through, to the, uh, to the land application. Uh, annual lift station maintenance completed on the seven lift stations. Uh, annual line preventative maintenance clearing has begun, uh, for his staff. They do that two times a year. Um, also fall preventative maintenance and winterizing is beginning. They're starting to do some of that work. And as I discussed earlier, uh, the sand filter has needed, uh, some temporary repairs so that we can continue to have it work until, uh, it's replaced. Um, nothing to report at the airport. Um, M L of M L Conference, I think several of us are going to be going to that, uh, September fifteenth through the eighteenth. The budget work session is scheduled for September twenty-sixth. Um, and I was asked to be the vice chairman, uh, for the, uh, SimCog, uh, Transportation Advisory Committee, um, that I go to on a monthly basis, so, um, I've been asked to do that and I have accepted, so. Um, I'm gonna be sitting in on, on all of the, I sit in on all those meetings anyway. I'm the only one that sometimes makes comments, so I think that just is what got me nominated to do that, uh, so. Um, employee health insurance is a thought, I said, starts tomorrow. Um, staff attended, Carrie attended the Missouri Main Street Annual Conference. Uh, came back very, very excited, uh, had some very, very interesting information, um, to share on some different strategies and thoughts there. Commandance completed for the year, tender fence agreement, uh, has reached with the school district committee. Uh, that just needs to be finalized by the school district, uh, uh, school board. And then I think that is about it. Council, I did have one question that I didn't have on there, is that I know that this is something that has been, I think there's been a little bit of a love-hate relationship with the community partner funding. There's some, um, aspects of it that you like, some of it that you did not like. Um, is that something that you wanted us to, uh, proceed with? Or is this something that you wanted us to hold until, uh, after we have our budget work sessions, uh, to make a determination if you wanted to do that this year or not?
I'd just prefer to wait until we have our budget.
Jim?
I don't know if it makes a difference to me, that's, what, budget session's a month away or whatever, a month away, so.
We're, we're in no hurry, uh, is, is that, you know, it's, it's for the twenty twenty-five budget year. So if we don't actually go through that until after the first of the year, that's not a problem.
That makes sense, parameters first, too, so.
Yeah, I think it makes sense. Um, I'm fine with, with waiting until the budget discussion along those lines. Um, could we have a, our budget work looks by, by that nine thirteen, Friday, before we go to M M L?
That is, that is what I'm trying to, that is what I'm trying to do. That is, that is my, my target date, to get them to you by that time.
I'm gonna have, uh, some of the stuff, and I wanna make sure I'm prepared, so. Would love, love to have it on or before nine thirteen.
Yeah, it's, uh, with everything else, kind of, uh, being a little, um, wonky, trying to, to get things scheduled a little, uh, this year. Uh, that threw us off. Normally, I tried to, last year, we got it done before we ever went to, to M M L, but it just, with everything else, it just didn't work out this year.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Any other questions, council?
No.
Nothing? Anything else?
I'd just like to add, uh, one of my general updates on the economic development report I just threw in there. I have an opening on the Board of Zoning Adjustment, so I'd just like to get that on the record and let the council know I'm looking for someone. I need to fill that seat really bad. Um, so if you know of anybody that has any, uh, zoning, land use, um, or is easily trainable with that kinda thought process, I would love you to send them our way.
You got it, okay. Well, if nothing else, I wanna thank the audience for, uh, being here and participating, and I will make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you.
Okay, John, just call me whenever you, you have time.
Uh, there's a problem, give me that.
He says we pass, pass that ethics thing every year, you know, we didn't pass it.
Ethics thing?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
So they all had to file financial disclosures. Because, uh, she, one of our, the one councilor that caused all the problems, thought it was some ploy on our part to, but I'm like, this is a form from the state, like, I copy and paste the language they gave us into this word.
That's hard to.
This is wrong, this, I go, well, you can either sign it or you can not sign it, and they didn't pass it.
Argue with the ethics.
Wow.